Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to our special call board meeting on January 3rd, 2023 at 6:00 PM in the Estill County Boardroom. At this time, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Um, I'd like to welcome everyone and we always start by saying our pledge, so if everyone could stand, we will say our pledge to the flag.
Our pledge alleges to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, and number one, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Now where Mr. Saylor is?
Well, that thing is never un-straight.
He's straightened his up every time.
Note, Andrea, get a sticker.
Get some Velcro.
I'd like to remind everyone, if you'd like to sign in, we have a sign-in sheet as you walk into the door. Um, first on our agenda, we have to elect our 2023 Chairperson for the Board. And so, we need to elect, um, Vice Chair and a Chair. So, do we, does anybody have a motion?
I do. I have a motion to elect you as Chair and I'd like to keep you there. You've done a wonderful job, so I'd like to keep you there.
Okay, so, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second? Sheila Samples makes a second. I'd like to call for a vote at this time. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. I appreciate that vote of confidence and I will try hard to lead this board forward.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Um, at this time, we need to elect a Vice Chairperson. So, do we have any, uh, motion or nomination for Vice Chair? Tammy Hardy?
Brian.
Okay, so I have a motion to elect Brian Covey as Vice Chair. Um, do we have a second? Sheila Samples makes a second. I'd like to call for a vote at this time. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Alright, thank you ladies. Appreciate it.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Um, next on our agenda, we have to elect our Finance Corporation Officers.
And guys, usually, I don't know that there'll be any unique reason for the coming year to, uh, reconvene the, uh, uh, Finance Corporation, but if there is, just in case, we've started doing this about six years ago to make sure we didn't get in position, that we didn't know who the officers were. Uh, you all can do this with one, uh, motion to elect a President and a Vice President for the Finance Corporation.
Um, so, I, um, historically, in the past, we did the Chair and the Vice Chair.
That is true.
And so, do I have a motion to make the Chair and Vice Chair as the Finance Corporation Officers?
I'll make a motion.
Tammy Hardy makes a motion. Do we have a second? Carrie Smallwood makes a second. Do we have any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next on our agenda, we had some paperwork to take care of. We had, um, public record and duty under law. Would you like to discuss that, Mr. Saylor?
Go back up one. Let's set our meeting dates and times. No, it's good.
Let's set our meeting dates then. Um, historically, it's the 3rd Thursday. Um, so, if you all would like to keep that the same, um, I need a motion to keep it the same.
I'll make the motion.
Sheila Samples makes a motion to keep it the same. Do we have a second? Brian Covey makes a second.
And to clarify the motion for Rebecca, it is the 3rd Thursday of the month, 6:00 PM here at the...
In the Boardroom.
In the Boardroom at the Central Office. And anytime you vary from that, it then becomes a special call meeting, whether it's place, time, or either one or day.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries with a 5-0 vote. Next, we're under our public record and duty under law. Sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself.
No, that's okay. Every, uh, year, uh, Attorney General, uh, has your, uh, public record and duty under the law. Of course, this has to do with open meetings. It also has to do with your responsibilities and roles as a Board Member. Uh, site-based councils do the same thing in our schools. Uh, so, it's important that you understand the Open Records Act. It's also, you know, important that, to, again, going back to the duties of a Board Member. What is the responsibility of a Board Member? Remember that Boards of Education only have power at the moment they, they convene a meeting, all the way until that meeting adjourns. Then you are a regular citizen in Estill County, just like everybody else. Your main duties is, of course, is budgeting, uh, and, uh, making sure that you approve the budget and the payment of bills. Uh, you're also responsible for the policies and procedures that the school district operates under. And as you're getting ready to start the process tonight, you're responsible for the hiring and the evaluation of the Superintendent. And, uh, so, knowing your duties within, uh, what you're allowed to do as a Board Member, I think is very important. We've been very blessed, I can say, in my seven and a half years so far. Uh, our Boards have always left running the school district to the Superintendent. Uh, that doesn't mean when parents come to you and community members come to you, you bring any issues and concerns to the Superintendent. And that's, that's the role that you play. Uh, so, this tonight, each one of you all will sign that documentation that you have received this document and that you understand the provisions of that document. So, it's really not a, an action item. If you want to take the time to read that and you want to, uh, uh, sign that paper and give it to Rebecca at a later date, that's fine. But it probably needs to be turned in before the next Board meeting, uh, when you'll start conducting, uh, normal business. Anybody got any questions?
That signature page is in everyone's red packet that you received.
Rebecca, let me ask you real quick. Did you conduct the oath? Okay, we need to do that before we take it in. Probably should have done it beforehand because technically, if we want to get right down to it, until you guys were duly sworn in, you got only, you only have three yells votes on all those other items. Am I being wrong on that, Tim?
Yeah.
No.
I'm not wrong, so we may have to go back and reaffirm those votes. And I'm sorry, I should have, when I saw that you, he handed me that and you said you'd already got it, they, they have to take the oath, so before we move forward, let's go back, uh, let's back up. And, uh, let's give both of our new Board Members, which are our returning Board Members, they need to do the oath. So, if you guys want to, y'all need to come forward right here and let's do that. And I'm sorry. I, I, when you handed me that paper, I never thought a thing about it. I thought maybe she'd already done it before we got down here. So, Rebecca's gonna give you all the oath. And then we may just want to reaffirm those votes. I think we can do that without going through motions and everything again. So Rebecca, if you want to, this is the first oath.
We have two, two oaths, the constitutional oath and the statute of rights. So the first one we're gonna do is the constitutional oath.
And they'll need to raise their right hand.
May you live in peace. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth? And be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky so long as you continue to be a citizen thereof? And that you will faithfully execute to the max of your ability the office as School Board Member of the Estill County Board of Education according to law? And do you solemnly swear to affirm that since the adoption of this statute of the Constitution, you, being a citizen of this state, have not caused a duel with deadly weapons within this state nor a death? Nor have you sensed or accepted challenge to find a duel with deadly weapons? Nor have you acted in second, uh, practically with violence, a challenge to anything or as seriously any card can does a finger so long ago? Our next is those statute of rights. Now being a person duly sworn to say that you will elsewhere under the law serve as a member of the Estill County Board of Education? And that you will not, while serving as a member of such Board become interested directly or indirectly in any contract with any or claim against the Board? And that you will not in any way influence the hiring or appointment of district employees except the par of the Superintendent of Schools or School Board of Education?
Congratulations, you all are now duly sworn in. I am sorry for that because when I saw Brian, when he handed me where he'd signed the oath page, I thought, "Okay, I could have already done it." And then it just, I thought we better make sure. Let's real quick, let's just reaffirm, let's reaffirm those votes.
Okay.
I think you had a motion by Brian and a second by Sheila to elect, uh, Donna as the Chair.
Yes.
Uh, do you all want to vote again on that?
Yes.
Yes.
So, everybody that, uh, agrees with Donna as our Chair needs to vote now? Okay, so it's 5-0. Uh, let's go back to Vice Chair. You had a motion by Tammy and a second by Sheila to elect Brian Covey as the Vice Chair. So, let's vote again now that you all are sworn. That's 5-0. Uh, the Finance Corporation Officers, you had a motion by Tammy and a second by Carrie to elect Donna as the President and Brian as the Vice President of the Finance Corporation. So, a vote for that one?
5-0.
Again, it's 5-0. And then, set the meeting dates and times, which is the 3rd Thursday at 6:00 PM at the Estill County Board of Education, uh, Boardroom. And reaffirm that vote. That's 5-0. Now we're caught up.
We're legal.
We're legal.
Sorry about that. I didn't see it on the agenda, so I just started with the agenda, so sorry about that.
And it may be a note from now on, Rebecca, because we're just getting into KSBA, the agenda. You might always want to remember, just put up there in front, swearing of new Board Members. Okay? It's every two years and it'd just be good if we can book back on it. And if you'll revise this one, then we'll make sure to get it in the packets where we'll know that from now on. Thank you. And it, it's not anybody's fault. It's just, I, I assumed when Brian handed me his oath page that it was, uh, good to go. So it's, don't assume.
We got it all taken care of.
It's all taken care of.
All taken care of. So, we have a little bit of, uh, business to take care of when it comes to facilities and our construction update. First, we have the high school fieldhouse restroom renovation project.
Yeah, as you all know, we ran out of time before the football season started to get the restrooms completely renovated at the fieldhouse. So, we left the men's restroom alone, went ahead and re-renovated the women's, uh, facility. But now, once the season is done, we went back and we had to do a change order to get it added, to get the things that, uh, needed to be done. Uh, that bathroom will be expanded, uh, into the other section. And also, we included all the flooring, not only for that restroom, but also for each of the locker room areas in the fieldhouse and the new fieldhouse. I think the, uh, total of that change order is a little bit over eighty thousand dollars. We've been expecting this for a while. Uh, we just need an approval, uh, from you guys so that we can get, uh, moving forward. And as you can see there, I believe it's eighty-five thousand thirty dollars. And that's the amount of the change order.
Okay.
So that's my, uh, recommendation.
Okay. So, I need a motion for approval of change order number two for the Estill County High School Field, Fieldhouse Restroom Renovation Project, which is BG 22-243 for eighty thousand...
Eighty-five thousand thirty dollars.
Eighty-five thousand thirty dollars. Okay, Brian Covey makes a motion. Sheila Samples makes a second. Do we have any discussion? Okay, I'd like to call for a vote at this time. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries with a 5-0 vote. Okay, next, we have, um, approval of, uh, consideration of approval of a BG one for the high school fieldhouse restroom renovation project.
Because the amount of the renovation was greater than, I believe it's 10%, you had to revise your BG one. You can see the new numbers there. Uh, and the way that, uh, it was done is, uh, this money went into the contingency part of it. Peter is the one that took care of this. You can see it raises the total project to, uh, two-hundred-seventy-three thousand nine-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars. It's ARPS or three funding. So, uh, the money is there, so you've got to get the BG one updated to reflect this change.
Okay. So, I need approval, a motion to approve the revised BG one for the Estill County High School Fieldhouse Renovation Project, which is BG 22-243 as discussed. Sheila Samples makes a motion. Do we have a... Tammy Hardy makes a second. Do we have any discussion? Okay, I'd like to call for a vote at this time. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. I know we moved through those kind of quick, but we've been talking about this for a long time, so...
Yeah. It, it was just, we didn't have time to do it back in the fall. Probably the biggest complaint at the stadium we had all year long was, even though the men's restroom was the same size that it's always been, that was the biggest complaint. That and the concession stand. You know, we've got, um, we've got the facility planning project, uh, facility planning for the next four years starts this month. Uh, so we'll be addressing some of those issues moving forward. As you know, we made promises to Estill Springs and, uh, some of those things, so we'll start working on that. Got a lot of work to do between now and June.
We've spent a lot of time on sewer lines and bathrooms.
Oh, this would have went a lot quicker if Sheila hadn't had a duel with somebody.
Okay, so moving right along with our agenda, we have an official announcement of our Superintendent retiring.
Well, it's, uh, I don't know, it's, uh, sort of hard sometimes to even think about. But, uh, after thirty-eight years and after spending the last eight years here in Estill County, I do think it's time for me to retire. Um, if not, we brought Tim all the way this, uh, all this distance for nothing tonight.
Hey, if you change your mind, man, I'm fine. I know they would be.
But, um, guys, I, I can't even begin to thank you. I wanted to give everybody this. I, I've cried either way, but, uh, this is official for you, okay? And, uh, I made a copy for each of you all. And, um, I am, there, there's a part of me that wonders what I'm gonna do on July 1st, but I think I'll be able to sleep on July 1st. It's probably July 2nd. But you know, I, I'm really, I'm really, from that standpoint, from my, I guess my work life, uh, it's hard to imagine that, uh, I'm gonna be moving on and, uh, leaving something that I've put my heart and soul in too for thirty-eight years. Uh, but on a personal side, I'm looking forward to being able to go spend time with Gwen. She's been retired now for the past four years or five, I think. I think it's five. Um, if not, it's four, it's four or five. So, she's been retired and I'm looking forward to going and spending time with her. I've got four grandsons that I'm looking forward to being able to spend more time with. And, uh, you know, uh, somebody said, "What are you gonna do when you retire?" I said, "Well, I've worked thirty-eight years, so I don't have to do anything if I don't want to." So, um, I went back and forth with this a lot. And I know that, uh, I believe if I called on the Board and said, "Listen, I, I'd like to come back." I, I think that, I think we could work together and continue to work together, but, uh, it just comes a time that it's time to go.
And make every minute count.
And that's what I plan on doing. And, uh, I'm looking forward to spending time, as I said, with Gwen, with my kids, uh, with my grandsons. And, uh, so with that, uh, you have my official resignation in front of you that's effective at the end of the day on June 30th, which means I'll be a July 1st retiree with, uh, with the retirement court. And I, listen, thank you all. The letter says it better than I can tell you tonight. Thank you all for this opportunity. Thank Estill County for the opportunity to be here. Uh, this is, this is gonna remain my home. I'm not planning on, I'm not going back. I've been treated better in Estill County than anywhere I've ever been in my life. And I'm thankful. The God, uh, the good Lord has blessed me with this opportunity. And, uh, I'm not going anywhere. I'm keeping my reserved seats at football and basketball. I'm not going anywhere, so I appreciate it all. Thank you all for this opportunity. Appreciate you. And we've got a lot of work to do the next six months and we'll continue. I'll, I'll continue to serve as your Superintendent and work hard every day because that's what I'm committed to do, to taxpayers of this county and our students and our staff and parents. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Well, anybody that knows Mr. Saylor knows that he's not gonna be a lame duck Superintendent. So, I know that he'll be giving it all he's got right at, until he walks out the door. And on behalf of myself and the Board, I mean, thank you, thank you for being here. You came and you were a visionary. You had ideas and thoughts and plans. And we, as the Board, were just thankful to help you fulfill those visions. And one of the things my grandpa always told me is, "You'll know when you're on top." And sometimes when you're on top, it's time. And so, I feel like that you're going out on top. And I don't think you could ask for any better, for any more.
I appreciate that.
And so, you will remain a, a legend here. You've done things that we've never been able to do. And I personally, and I, I feel like I'm speaking for the rest of the Board, would just forever be grateful for the change that you made in this community and for the lives of our children and our children to come. So, thank you.
And generations to come.
Um, and if anybody has any other comments?
Well, thank you. Thank you for those kind words.
And God bless you and you. Godspeed.
We made a great team and, uh, we, we've still got work ahead and I appreciate y'all. Uh, Mr. Tim Eaton with KSBA is, of course, your appointed representative to help lead you, uh, in the Superintendent search. And, uh, I think probably most of us are gonna leave. Jeremy's gonna continue to, uh, videotape the meeting uh, so that anybody in the public that wants to continue to watch, they can listen to the orientation part of the meeting. Uh, there'll be a lot of meetings in the future that you all will have that will be closed session. You know, you'll be under open records and open meetings, all just the same as any other Board meeting. Uh, Andrea is, uh, your, uh, appointed representative. Uh, she is the contact person for Tim and she'll work with you all to make sure that the application process goes smoothly and, uh, be you all's liaison. And so, the, the three of you, the three groups, you all will work together. Uh, Abby can be a part of some of this, but of course, all the closed meetings and stuff like that, Abby, you would not be able to. Abby's our student rep.
Yeah, the screening committee is well-defined and I've had lots of places ask me if we could add this one, that one. By law, it's, it's defined as to what it is. And, uh, of course, I'm gonna talk to them about that in a few minutes. Uh, Jeff, you, you might want to get them to accept your resignation. I think that'd be proper. Um, I think that's...
Oh, that really makes it official.
And you can't back up unless they vote.
Yeah, they would have to vote.
I think, I think really you'd want to have them accept it tonight.
I will ask, uh, for a motion to accept my resignation.
So, I, I need someone to make a motion to officially accept Mr. Jeff Saylor as, um, resigning as Superintendent of Estill County School System effective July, uh, July 1.
Make the motion.
Sheila Samples makes a motion. Do we have a second?
I stubbornly second.
Brian Covey makes a second. Do we have any discussion?
You said it perfectly a while ago. We, we appreciate everything you've done.
Thank you all. I think we feel the same about each other.
So, I need, um, I'd like to call for a vote at this time. All in favor? Any opposed?
Well, I'm gonna leave you guys with it. Thank you all. You need me, you know to holler at me. My cell phone's well-published. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, sir. I'll be talking to you.
Mr. Saylor, don't be embarrassed. Put your glasses. Do you wanna sign out of your paper?
Consequently, consequently, Mr. Saylor, the last time I was here, when the Board selected you, was my seventh Superintendent search. This is my forty-eighth one.
Oh, my goodness.
So, you've been here a long time. And, uh, that's, that is not the way it is right now in a lot of cases. So, you've been blessed to keep a good leader for two terms. And that's, that's, uh, that's a blessing. Uh, don't see that, I don't see that a whole lot right now.
We've been hard on him. They tried to run him off.
So, uh, you can be thankful for that and, uh, but anyway. Thank you, sir.
Be careful going home.
Jerry. So, um...
Well, they raided the premise system.
So, at this time, we would like to welcome Mr. Tim Eaton from KSBA and to discuss our Superintendent search.
I'm not, I'm not glad to be here because you need a Superintendent, but I'm glad you selected me to help you find one because you've gotta do that. And, um, it's a, it's a great, were, were any of you all on the Board the last time?
I wasn't on the Board with Mr. Saylor, but I've been involved in a Superintendent search with Mr. Hensley. I was a parent rep then.
So, no one here was sitting on the Board at that time?
No.
Okay.
I was a teacher when it was...
Okay, Sheila. All new ground then here we're plowing tonight. So, uh, that's fine. Uh, a little personal note. Seventy-degree swing from last week, this week brought me a sinus infection. Any of you all that are worried about it? I did a home COVID test today. I was negative. Uh, so, uh, don't, don't worry too much about that. I'm not contagious, but I will stay my distance from you because I don't know if we even know anymore what we've got, you know?
Plus the pine fumes is not helping either.
But anyway, uh, I'm gonna give you a packet. We're gonna do two very important things tonight and answer all of your questions, of course. We're gonna, we're going to, uh, talk about the next, the qualities you were wanting in your next leader. We're gonna talk about a timeline that we, that we may want to do this within because, uh, you're starting at a good time. Mr. Saylor gave you plenty of time to, uh, to do this process and that's not always the case. So, you can also be thankful for that. And we're just gonna nail those two things down tonight. And being as you're new with this, I'm sorry, Andrea, yours has a special note on it.
Oh, great.
It has something more in it than that, doesn't it? Anyway, this is an open meeting. Nobody's here, but, uh, it is an open meeting. And, um, nothing that we're gonna talk about tonight's confidential, but I think Mr. Saylor mentioned to you that when we get into the process, and you've served, don't you? Uh, we do have closed meetings. Uh, most of the meetings will be closed because when we convene with the committee, then we go, usually, we don't have a little business right on the front end that's open. We go straight into closed session like you would for a personnel issue or pending litigation or anything like that you go in closed session for. So, to start with, uh, lots of times, you've got a Superintendent going out on a high note, like yours, which is, you can be thankful for. Uh, you want the successor to be named a little bit early where they could come in and maybe work with Mr. Saylor and get some good mentoring before they take the job on July 1. So, I want to throw that out to you. Is that something that the Board, we're right on, right on number one of the, uh, search plan agenda? Uh, what, what would be the end date or the date that you would want to, uh, to have somebody in place?
I would think that, and this is just me personally thinking through everything, I would like to have at least a four-week window that we would have someone in place that they could...
To the first?
Maybe even six weeks so that they could...
Yeah, mid-June.
That's doable. Um, remember though, we would be naming the Superintendent an official hire date, the July 1. But I've never seen anybody that, uh, has turned down any Board for naming them early and asking them to come, uh, unless they live in Chicago or something, which I don't much believe you'll pick anybody. uh, unless they live in Chicago or something, which I don't much believe you'll pick anybody in Chicago. So, uh, some time with Mr. Saylor would be good. And I would recommend that if, if that's.
I just think that we have a lot of projects that are, we're trying to finish up. To have just the financial piece of it. I would just think that it would be real important that someone is able to sit down and work through some of that with him.
Well, it's, it gives them a good jumpstart.
It gets them up to speed on what's going on in the district.
Do you think that your recommendation would be more than that or, I mean?
Or less.
Or less, or I was just asking.
In that four to six weeks?
Yeah.
That's, that's very doable, I think. Yeah. I'm going to make a note of that. Four to six weeks, name new superintendent. Now, uh, let's talk about advertising dates. KSBA does all the advertising through our portal. Uh, Andrea won't have to fool with any of that. That's what we do. So, uh, all she'll have to do is report to, um, Frankfurt that there's a vacancy like you do with any other vacancy.
So just through CAPS, I will report that?
Yes, that's correct. And, uh, so that's important that we do that.
Do I, do I go ahead and do that tomorrow? Do we do it as early as possible with his resignation?
I think, I think you should because we're probably going to advertise this in a few days. And they want to know about it in Frankfurt and, uh, as a vacancy. So I would go ahead and do that. Uh, the norm for districts to put an advertisement out there, which is the next thing we're going to work on, would be 30 days. You only have to do it by law now 15 days, but you've got plenty of ample, you've got ample time to run it 30 days at least. Some districts even go beyond that. I don't know that it's any more effective to run it 45 days than it is 30. But meaning that during that time, I would be working with Ms. Williams to seat the screening committee. While we're, while we've got the ad out there, nothing else is going on. We're getting our screening committee together. Then when that is accomplished, then we would, um, uh, I would come back, bring all the applications in. We would have our first meeting, joint meeting, we call it, with the board and the screening committee. And you would be here about 15 minutes or 20 at the most. And I would have the board chair lady to read a charge to the committee. And that charge will be written, I'll, I'll fix that for you based on the criteria we come up with in the advertisement that goes out all over the country. And our portal does reach all of the United States. We get applications from New Mexico, Colorado, North Dakota, everywhere. I had a couple from Hawaii, but, um, I wanted to go there and interview them, but they wouldn't let me.
I think that's a great point. I think that's a good one. Will all applications be done through your portal and not through our website? Okay.
You.
I just advertise it on, or put it on CAPS.
Yeah. And now it's up to the district. We get an ad settled. If you want to, if you want to promote it in the newspaper or whatever, you can do that. Um, but it says plainly at the bottom to apply. Go to KSBA, blah, 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 to our website and do their application. So none of the applications will run through you, which I know that's good news. I think it is.
It is.
And, uh, a lot of times boards will say, well, how many applicants you think we'll get? In this day and time, I could not even speculate. I've done, I did eight searches last year. Powell County had 12. They had 12 applicants, okay? Going up to Lee, Donald had seven. Owlsley had seven. McCray County had 15. Marion County, pretty good sized district out west, they had 12. So I used to see 30, but it's not like that now. And I don't know, I can't explain that unless, unless people are, are really choosing that path. I don't know. And while I'm talking about that, probably not, uh, I wouldn't be real optimistic about getting experienced superintendent applications. I don't see a lot of that. I see a lot of new applicants. They might be assistants somewhere, or they might be in central office somewhere, or they might be a high school principal, or they might be a retiree that wants to come out of retirement. You see that. So I could not tell you, speculate to you how many applications that you might get. But we'll say for, for a guess, probably a dozen at least, I hope. So you can only hire one, but, uh, we always like to have a pretty good field that the committee can work on. And what their job is, is to vet those applicants down according to your criteria. Like again, we're going to work on in a few minutes. They're to vet them down to those qualities the best they can. And lots of times we will get applications of superintendents that have been let go somewhere. And I know, I know most of those situations and I let the committee figure that out. If they don't figure it out, I eventually tell them because, uh, if there's a story behind it and they've been on the front page of the hurl leader for wrongdoing, I'm not going to let that applicant get to you all. Okay? That's my job and I, but I don't blackball anybody. It's just the fact that they usually find that out in the screening process. I don't, first thing I do, I don't say, well, you don't want this and this and this and this and this. I don't do that. I let them do some screening and find it out for themselves. And most time you've served on one of those committees, okay? If I had a private detective company, it'd be good to have some of the people I've worked with because they can find out some pretty, uh, hairy things about people. And of course with the media now, social media and Google and all that, we have no secrets. So anyway, we've settled on, uh, what, what would be your desire about advertisement time, timeline? 30 days, 15 days, 20 days, 45 days? What do you think?
I wouldn't go past 30 personally. I just think that's too long. And I would be okay.
There's not any benefit to it.
I, I wouldn't go past 30 and I would be okay with two weeks, but you, you all share what you think about it, but.
Well, you've got, uh.
People are watching for this, I think. People know that it's going to happen, so.
Yeah, our application takes about six hours to fill out. It's detailed and, um, you probably don't want to make it real short, like 15 days. I'd, I'd stretch it out. So, cause we're, here we are, January the 3rd. I mean, we could have the, we could have the applicants back by middle of February at least, you know? And have them processed and be ready to meet with screening committee. So we're on a good timeline to do 30.
Is there a background check?
Yes. There, we, we do some of that. The committee does some of that, but they fill out a criminal background records check on, in our application process. And if there's ever a yes on there, that's what you got to read. Most of the time, all of them are no, but you do have some people who do reveal their past. And, uh.
Thank you.
Sometimes it's not, uh, sometimes it's nothing more than a speeding ticket, but you know? And that wouldn't, that shouldn't knock somebody out of being superintendent because we've probably all been guilty of that. So 30 days, okay?
I wouldn't go past 30 personally, but.
Do we need to vote on that?
That's a good day.
Do we need to vote?
When I post like our jobs or this is just.
No, none of this is voted on. We're, we're, uh, we're just.
We're just going to make sure it's legal, what we're doing.
Oh, you're legal. You're good.
Okay.
And, uh, um, I've not, I've never been questioned. I might be on this one, but I've never been questioned about anything I've done on superintendent search anywhere. Never had any kind. I only had one complaint and, uh, the lady just didn't like me period. So that happens.
It's part of life.
And I told my boss, I said, this lady doesn't like me. And he said, who? And I told him, well, she didn't like anybody. Well, it makes me feel a little better.
You got more company anymore.
Um, now depending on how we. Well, let, let, let me tell you about the screening committee and then we'll get into that ad and, and really get in with it. But, uh, your district probably does not have 8% minority population in students. So that means we would have two teachers and it's in your packet. It's, it's, uh, it's down at the bottom there on that front page. You can see that under those little blank things. We'll go back to that in a minute. But board chair appoints the person on the board. It's not a vote. Uh, Donna has the authority by law to say, Carrie, you do this. Or Carrie, would you do this? You all can settle that however you want to. I don't care, but it's not anything that has to be in record as a vote. It could be on your board minutes that said, uh, Chair, Chair Lady Donna appointed such and such person.
But it is.
And you can appoint yourself.
But it is a lot of work and it's a lot of time. It's a commitment.
It's a commitment.
And if you do it, you have to be there and you have to be engaged.
It's, uh, it's a lot of reading.
Yes.
Uh, it's, uh, it's time consuming. There's no doubt about it.
I've served on for finding a principal.
Well, a lot, a lot of the same protocol and the site base, you know? Uh, in, in ways. Um, so one board member appointed by the board chairperson, one principal. I would have Mr. Saylor just to bring the principals in. I'll talk to him about that and let them elect their own representative out of their group. It cannot be an assistant principal. It's got to be a head principal unless the district did not have a head principal. And if anybody's an applicant for the position that would be a principal, they would not qualify to be on the committee, of course. That, that only makes sense. Um, two teachers and by law, there's attorney general's opinion that's been challenged by KEA. Andrea will need to contact the local KEA group and offer them the opportunity to run the teachers election. I mean, that's the law. And of course, any kind of questions about that, uh, I'll work with them. But, uh, your local, and I've, I've never seen, I saw one district where they said they didn't have time and the, and the board just handled that one. But 47 other times they've, uh, they've done the teacher elections. And I talked to them about how the proper way to do that is and, uh, some of the wrong ways that it's been done in the past that need to, they need to pay attention to. One classified staff elected by classified peers. One parent, this is a tricky one and you served us this one time, you said. Um, elected, if you notice, by PTO presidents. You have PTA and PTO here or?
Not all of our schools have that.
No, in elementaries, mostly.
Yes, our two elementaries.
Uh, so I would have, uh, Andrea over here to contact the PTO presidents of wherever they exist. Probably none at the high school, probably none at the middle school. And bring them in and she's got some information she can share with them. And those people can say, she can say, does one of you all want to serve? And appoint one of you to do this because they're in the schools more than anybody. They say no, then we have a parent election and they have to handle the parent election, the PTO people do. Most of the time, they settle on some of them doing it, so, which makes it easier. Then you see the minority parent, eight, eight percent or more, that won't pertain to you all. So you'll have a six person screening committee and, uh, that's, that's all. And, uh, so any questions about any of that part?
Let me ask you the classified staff. How do we determine who runs that election?
Usually the board runs it.
Okay.
Just the district, uh, you.
Okay.
And Mr. Saylor may help you, you know, he may help you, but, uh, because they don't have an organization that, you know?
Can I send out like a blanket email to them and say who wants to run and then do a Google form?
I gave you, I gave you a little, uh, packet separate that has some advertisements on it. Uh, samples that you can use. That's correct. And what we do, even in the teacher election and that election, we have a nomination period. Maybe one to two weeks. How many students you guys got here and how many schools?
Two thousand. We have seven schools if you include like our success academy and.
Well, we got plenty of time. Nominations could, could last a couple of weeks. And then you set an election day and let it be all day long and they can vote wherever you all decide to and have a couple of people mind the ballot box. And I never do recommend electronic voting because we did that one time. One district said, oh, we want to use Survey Monkey and they had people vote four or five times. It was a mess. We had to start all over. So the old ballot box method is the best and the cleanest and.
Is it okay to have the election here so that it's a central location?
Correct. And, uh, now if somebody has gone, if somebody's gone on training. They can do an email.
Okay.
If they're out of district during the.
Cause we can set up like Google forms where you just have one email.
Okay.
That's associated with that.
And I don't have.
Which is your school email?
If you can do that, I don't mind you doing it.
Well, just if we had to do, um, because you're out of town.
Yeah.
You know, that way we can verify.
Or they're ill.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Who did you say, so this screening committee, that's a law on who sits that, who serves on that?
Yep.
That's a KRS.
Look at your last page of your packet.
Okay.
16352.
Gotcha.
That, that explains it. I was in one district, they wanted to have the mayor and they wanted to have the, all kinds of city officials on it. And I said.
It's not law.
No, uh, I mean, this is spelled out and it's this way till they change it. And I just told them, I said, you'll have to go have it legislated because I've got to follow this. Or I could be complained upon and mess up.
So it's not something that we could be, uh, like we couldn't just make our own rules and say the judge and the mayor and everybody else is on the service. We, as people have already been asking me who's on the committee, so.
Right there's what you got to show them.
It's KRS 160.352.
That needs to be put on our website.
Okay.
Says the screening committee shall, shall be composed of.
Not maybe.
When it says shall, it shall.
I just wanted to be sure we made that clear.
Everywhere I go, those questions, people say, I want to be on the screening committee. Can I be on it? You know, it's just, and you've got my business card in your folder. Tell them to call me. I can explain it to them nice. Say, look, sorry.
So with our parents, since we only have two PTO organizations, those are the first two that I am going to approach.
That's correct.
As if either of those presidents.
If those, either one of those two, I assume it's ladies, uh, sometimes it's men that are, does that.
Does West Auburn have a PTO president right now?
I'm not sure about it right now. I need to, I, I will find out for you all.
I've been in districts that only have one.
Yeah.
And if that person said, sure, I'll serve, cha-ching. Because again, they're in the school more than anybody.
If they aren't, do we go to vice presidents? Do we use them first that are elected on the PTO? Do you have any of the officials if president says no? Or do we automatically open it up to?
Open it up.
Gotcha.
Yeah, it, it don't.
If it's not president, open it up. If there's only one PTO, if that person says yes, we're good.
You're good.
But really with having only two elementary schools with a PTO, really that knocks out any other parent rep from any of your middle school, high school.
But, but most of the time the teachers come from those larger voting blocks. So it's a cross section of different folks. And one of the counties, they did tell me, oh, it's, uh, the high school parents didn't have a chance. Read the law and you don't have a PTA or PTO. And you don't have a P T A or P T O at your high school. The law says the parent comes from that organization. But the spirit of the law, in my opinion, was for the elementary school to be represented in some way. So that's where they're represented, that parent, that elementary school. Then you've got most of the time teachers. Sheila, was you a, was you a high school or middle school teacher?
I was elementary.
Elementary, but you got elected?
Uh, I did on, uh.
Oh, you was on, yeah, you went on, okay. But most of the time those voting blocks at middle and high school, that's where you see the teachers. So you've got probably a high school teacher or two. You could have one from each, then you've got that elementary parent. Who knows where the principal's gonna be from, you know, uh, and then, then the board member.
So you have a good cross-section.
Sorry, I have so many questions about it.
No, that's, that's what you're paying me to do, answer questions and come across with the, the leadership to do this. No, no, no bad questions because this is your first rodeo and as board members, I realize that. Just remember you choose the superintendent, screening committee doesn't. And that's what I make very clear at the first joint meeting to them. I read some roles and responsibilities of the board. And what their work is, is just to be a, uh, do the legwork for you. If you had fifteen applications and you tell me, and that's what I'm gonna ask you next, how many do you want to interview as a board? Because you'll have access to all the applications. But they're gonna bring you three to five of the best is what we hope for. So what in your mind is a good number for you all to interview in the finale? Then if you don't like any of them, you can go back and look at the others yourself too, see. But you have access to the applications when they're finished with them. And I don't, I don't want you to take them before then unless you absolutely want them because it takes a lot of pressure off of you. You're out there in public and somebody says, well, them, who all applied for superintendent job? You say, I know they was twelve, but I don't know who they are yet. Screening committee's doing their work. They're gonna turn them over to us and then we do our work. It works better that way, but you're paying me. If you tell me it's the board, I want that, I want the applications just soon as screening committee. You can have them, but I'll warn you, you may have to tell a white lie or two because somebody's gonna ask you. And it's just safe for you to put the monkey on their back. They're working right now to vet these candidates to get us the best power of many. So what in your mind, again, would you want the number to be that you would ask them to vet?
Are you good, good with five? No more than six, I would say.
No more than six.
No more than six, but.
Sometimes, uh, I just mentioned it, sometimes we give them a range because you may not find five or six really good ones. Because sometimes number four, one, one, two, and three, and four may be here and five and six may be up here. Well, do you want to interview five and six anyway if they're that far apart? That's my point. So sometimes we put down three to five or three to six or four to six. So you all, Mr. H R Director, you help them, you help them.
I would think no more than six, but I would say three to five would give us a good range because.
You're gonna see as you start getting applicants and you set your criteria, that there's gonna be some that really, really stand out. And the others, you know, your criteria may be that you want them to have been in a leadership role for three years. And when you get one, you know, this person was an assistant superintendent for three years in this outstanding district. But nobody else came close to that. And so you kinda are picking straws if you go too many.
We've been there, I did that when we had Estes Springs Principal Stalk.
You just have to be really.
And a good, uh, interview is gonna take you an hour, hour and a half and maybe more. So, uh, consider your time too. Uh, but like I said, if you interview the top three to five and you don't like any of them, we go back to the drawing board. Okay?
I would say three to five would be a good range if, if the board is good with that.
Gives your, gives your committee a little flexibility. Cause they'll say, well, at number five, he was terrible, but they wanted five. You don't need to fool with that terrible guy. My point, okay? So are we good with three to five ladies and, and gentlemen? Singular gentleman? You know, I get so tickled when they read that off about a duel with deadly weapons. Why in the world don't they upgrade that from nineteen thirty, whatever it was? That's just crazy. Of course, the world we live in, I couldn't tell you that we may not have, have a duel for long somewhere.
That's what I was gonna say, it wouldn't be.
Somewhere down the road. Uh, hope not. Now, you've done good so far. Any questions right now about anything that we've covered? Cause you'll have more questions as we move on. Anything? I'm a little different than Jeff. When, when I went home and retired, my wife said, you need to go back to work. We're there a lot during the day because I do this work at night. But, uh, it, it is an adjustment when you first retire, you're both at home.
Yes, in their day.
It's, um, you know, uh, it's a little. Sometimes the house isn't big enough.
It's our mom's son.
Well, it'd be so too, so that's. And I've ran for the school board.
There is a, just a sample, very generic vacancy ad in there. Pretty much generic that I start with almost everywhere. Says, it's, it's, it's got your district's name on it. It's got your enrollment, which I think that's pretty close. I got it off your website anyway. And then down at the bottom, I put a little thing about your county. I pulled some stuff off of your, uh, city, uh, chamber information. But here's what I want to propose to you. I'm gonna be quiet and let you read it. And then we're gonna talk about what you want changed. And if there's, we'll do it one of two ways. We'll change it tonight and I'll take it home and doctor it and fix it. Or you've got a perfect person here working with you that works in H R. And you can work with her to fix it the way you want it in days to come. It's just however you wanna do it. So I'll be quiet and let you read it. You know your district much better than I do. So anything in there that you want to change, feel free. I just do this to get us started. This is not setting any kind of stone, okay? It's just something to get started. And if you all wanna take it home with you, read it and work on it and, and, uh, call Andrea with your ideas. And she can clean it up and send it back to me. It's a, it's a template. I can send it to you.
Under the district's number one priority is the safety of the students and staff in an ever-changing society. I agree with that, but I also agree that one of our number one priorities is having a strong academic leader.
Sure.
And so I would like somewhere in there that.
Well, I took that, I took that off your district website, that wording.
Yeah, I understand.
It's on there. The district's number one priority is the safety. And that's, that's a good thing to say in this troublesome time we live.
Absolutely.
It's a good thing to say, but I know what you're saying too.
But you can put that in your criteria.
Up at the top. Uh, and, and it's kinda up there.
It's up there.
Yeah.
Seeking innovative motivational leaders, strong proven leadership and record of improving student achievements next superintendent. Now, there may be something you all want to say in there to continue the progress that we've made under the current administration or superintendent. Or you may, you know, you may want to add some things in there. Cause it's all personal to you all.
So what you think is the best is for us to just kinda tweak it and call Andrea this week and give her our thoughts.
Now, that's an option. If you wanna, if you wanna settle it tonight.
If we do it now or get it out?
Well, if you want to settle it tonight, we'll, we'll, we'll tackle it right now.
Let's settle it.
So just whatever you all want, want in there and I'll take, I'll make the notes, take it home and edit it and.
Let's settle it.
If we'd settle it tonight, I can get it advertised sooner.
Let's do it.
So give me your ideas then.
Our population is a little bit higher than that, so I would have to, mhm. We're, we're almost at twenty-five hundred.
Oh, good.
Yeah, we've, we've worked really hard to get our.
Yes, they have.
Virtual people back.
That's somewhere on your website, that number.
Probably the school report card.
I got it off something because I, I was digging everywhere I could to find stuff about your district. So that's good. Most places I go, they're losing.
But I can give you that number.
Okay. Well, it's an estimate, so if you think it's twenty-five hundred, that's close enough.
Okay.
So like where it says with salary, will we negotiate? So do we, okay, so just hypothetically, I'm already superintendent, I'm retiring. I make a hundred dollars a year. But so it's negotiable. The new one coming in is gonna make a hundred plus fifty, then maybe another fifty. Or, I mean, do we come in saying your salary range is gonna be from a hundred to two hundred a year? Or we start out at a hundred and then you might can get bonuses or?
You're gonna start with your salary schedule that's on the website.
That's right, there is that salary schedule.
You'll base it on years of experience, what their rank is, and then there's a stipend.
Right.
That you all have decided that we give our superintendent. So that's where we start.
Yeah, I forgot about that.
Correct?
Yes.
It's kinda like post office.
Yeah.
When we start at one level, then we go, I forgot about that, okay?
Do we need to include that in the letter or?
They're already gonna have an idea.
It says negotiable.
And if they are really interested in your district, they're going to your website and looking at your salary schedule.
They'll know what it is.
To know how much money they're gonna make.
You can go to K D E and look at everybody, every superintendent's salary.
Yeah, they're not.
But, uh, what you'll have to decide on is the board now, what you said's true, but you know, you've got a, and I don't have a clue what, uh, Mr. Sailor makes. But you can always back down a little bit from what your outgoing superintendent makes because you want somebody to prove themselves.
Right.
You want, you want to start paying them high level pay before you give them a chance to.
But that's like far down the road to start coming up with that.
After two years, if they've done a good job, you don't bump them.
No, I'm talking about negotiating salary and stuff. Like we won't even get to that point until you're ready to.
Hire.
Hire, make an offer.
Yep, that's right. And, uh, we'll get them on the phone, say, we want to offer you this, uh, if you'll come and be our superintendent. And, uh, and I want to say this to you, I think this is important to you. And I'll impart this information to the screening committee. I think, I think you deserve for your superintendent to live in your district. What about you all? Don't care?
That's always been, um, our history is that people have lived here. Mr. Sailor lives right on the Esco County, Powell County line.
Well, that's here though.
Yeah, but it's here, um.
You wouldn't want somebody from Northern Kentucky coming down here and staying in a motel during the week and going home on Friday evening and not being in your community on Saturday. That's what I mean.
We want people that'll invest in our community.
They need to be visible.
I agree with that.
You deserve that.
But I, I never really thought about that. Of all the stuff I've thought about, I never even considered that.
Well.
Yes, because they have a vested interest.
That's usually the first thing boards will tell me. We want our new superintendent to live. It don't matter to me. And up Northern Kentucky, they could care less. They don't care if they drive ninety-five miles to work. But most rural communities likes to see that superintendent at ball games and the church.
And you may even want to make it like a thirty-mile radius, you know?
Or adjacent county.
Maybe like they live in Madison, they live in Waco.
You can say in the county or in adjacent county.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just because sometimes proper years is not easy to find.
You couldn't, you could disqualify a good person from Richmond here. You couldn't do that. I understand.
Thirty miles would get Richmond, Powell, Lee.
Hey, let's leave that alone then. Let's just see where they apply from. And if, if you get in here and you find this great candidate that lives in, uh, Somerset, where I do. Are you willing to join our community and live closer? Where you can be here on weekends and blah, blah, blah. Then you start talking maybe. I don't, I don't think the screening committee needs to touch that really. That needs to be your all's.
Do you all have anything else to add to the?
Yeah, take your time. I'm, I don't want to rush you or nothing. I got up and I'll tell you a funny little story. I'm, I got Boyle County right now going on. Their, their, theirs is being advertised as we speak. And, uh, I wrote their ad up and I put something about Danville in there.
That didn't go real well.
I said, I'm going to Boyle County and I said, I've got Danville mentioned two times here at the bottom. And I said, I'll bet you anything, somebody calls my hand and, uh, real nice younger gal on board said, Mr. Eaton, I'm sorry, but could you strike that man? I said, I knew that was coming. That's about like Plasky County where I was superintendent.
Sounds pretty good.
You know what?
So I think.
I was superintendent at Plasky County my last ten years and then Somerset Independent was there and I understand the language. So anyway, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was gonna say, Mr. Eaton, I think from what I'm hearing from the board, we'll change the, um, population.
Enrollment.
Enrollment and then they're good with everything else.
So are you all, are you comfortable? You mentioned the thing about academics. I mean, I, I want you.
That's in the first statement.
What?
It's in the first statement.
Yeah, it's in the first statement. I just kinda cruised over it and then it said the number one priority and I was like, oh.
Listen, if you change your mind, and I will say this.
Are you good with it, Andrea?
Andrea, she might have some ideas too. And, uh, this is what she does. If you change your mind, just, uh, let me know in the morning.
You could even say the district's number one priority is the safety and education of the students and staff.
Put it together.
In an ever-changing society.
Okay.
Cause that way you're showing safety and academics are gonna go hand in hand.
Okay.
Honestly, I would also put something in here about updated facilities. I mean, you know, you're gonna, you want people when they look at this to know that you've got a brand-new A T C for our county. You've got new sporting facilities. All of your schools have been updated and renovated. If I were somebody coming into the community and schools were my thing, I would love to know that that, that construction is not something I've got to worry a lot about. Because this superintendent took care of it.
That needs to be down in the second paragraph somewhere.
Don't you all think that's important?
We've done forty-seven million dollars worth of construction of, to facilities in the last four years.
That needs to be statistically included in this too.
Okay. Tell me how you want it worded.
Andrea, how would you put it worded?
Forty-seven million you've done? Wow. Well, you're lucky you've got it behind you because price of things nails.
Well, that's why we had lots of bids that we had to redo, but.
Had to work on.
We've said no to several bids. Especially our sewer bills.
Able to spend your extra money on some roofs and things.
Yes.
And sewer lines.
I do.
I maybe wonder if you, maybe you add it in between after the small-town charm welcoming hospitality.
Academic.
Or, yeah, or, uh, then you could say, you know, well, you're the right.
Our facilities.
I'm hillbilly in it here, okay?
And for future generations, we have invested forty-seven million.
The district has invested.
To improve our infrastructure and our technology.
All of our kids have a Chromebook, one-to-one. I mean, that's a huge technology investment. Our facilities have all been upgraded.
I just think we have to, we. I just think we have to, we have to say, this is what's selling our districts to potential applicants. And, you know, them knowing.
You may get a whole different aspect of.
Yeah.
I mean.
Of applicants.
Of applicants just due to not having to deal with that.
Yeah, the budget part is, or the facilities part is taken care for then.
So you're talking about going down after the small town charm and welcoming hospitality before.
Before academically.
Thing, you're going to say, uh, you want to say something like.
I would say like, giving our students.
And future gen.
And future generations, state-of-the-art facilities, up-to-date technology, um. And, you know, and I think somewhere you do throw in forty-seven million renovation. I mean, I think that's important for them to know that, that our board's okay to spend money.
And our student athletes are, have access to updated facilities.
Sports complexes.
The only thing, and I don't mean to.
Well, you're the expert, so you tell us.
I'm not an expert in anything, except redneck.
I'm right there with you, Mr. Eaton.
It's right in with us.
Jack, well, trade master.
The only thing, you don't want to get too much specificity in the ad.
Okay.
It's more of a broad thing.
Okay.
And I'll just give you an example, there's a young man down Laurel County that's, that's, uh, aspiring to be a superintendent. I'll just tell you how they think. He calls me, he applies for Powell, okay? He calls me, he said, Mr. Eaton, take me out of there. I drove up to Powell County and I looked and their buildings are terrible. And our buildings are state-of-the-art in Laurel County. I don't, I, I don't, it's too big a challenge. I don't think I, we'd ever have enough money and I'm, I'm just telling you that, that's what he said. And so they do their research, but.
That's what I'm saying, cause it's kind of like when we go on vacation, we're researching, the hotel we want to go to, we're researching this.
If they're interested.
Right, we're going to come and do our research and look at everything before I decide.
Yeah, good point.
That might be someplace I do want to go.
Yeah.
Instead of, oh, well, let's try and see if I can get.
And this boy had never been to that county that I mentioned, I probably shouldn't mention that county, but.
Okay.
It, it.
We will worst in that county.
They're your neighbor.
That's an equal may see that you spent forty-seven million dollars and they think, oh, Lord, they will never get them out of debt, they've, they've spent every dime they've bought.
Yeah, so maybe you don't want money or we've invested.
What about a, um, statement like, uh, the prior eight years, our district has invested in.
Right.
State-of-the-art facilities for our students' future.
Mhm, yeah.
And our community's future, something like that.
That would be more toxic.
That's broad.
Broad, but it's.
But it's, it still tells that, they'll say, hey, I want to see those facilities, I believe I'll drive up there and look at it.
It's a carrot stick in pr- uh.
Yeah, and you remember.
Well, and when they get on our website too, we've got lots of pictures.
And you remember what I said, Andrea? I'm old, so I, I can say something nice and then I forget it.
Over the past eight years, how about we say we have taken pride in updating our facilities, sports complexes. And technology for our future generations. Does that sound good?
Or for our current students and future generations.
We'll put it like this, over the past eight years, the district has invested, did you say that or did I say that?
I had said taken pride, cause I think pride's a big thing in our district.
Good.
Or you could say take pride by investing.
By investing in the future of our students, by giving them.
State-of-the-art facilities.
Technology.
Cause we've come a long way and that's important for people to know by.
Okay, let me finish. Over the past eight years, the district has taken pride by investing in the future of our students. Should I say with state-of-the-art facility upgrades or?
Yes. Cause we didn't build, well, we built the new A T C.
We built the new A T C. The addition of a new A C T.
State-of-the-art upgrades and additions.
Uh huh.
And a new A T C.
That needs to be put in there.
And then I think you need to take the pride out, cause it sounds better with just the invested, invested in.
Take out pride.
Yeah, I think it sounds better with just invested. I did. I didn't, grammatically, I didn't like the way that's sounded.
And district has invested.
Mhm.
Okay. I may send this to you tomorrow, let you read it and tell me if I got it right or not.
Perfect.
Did you want the, uh, oh, down at the bottom it says, state-of-the-art facility upgrades, you want me to put it along with the new area tech center? Is it, is it a A T C or?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, nothing gets our sports facility, I think the A T C is a little bit.
Oh, hey, that's a little bit.
Oh, well.
The star, the shining star.
Right, that's more star to me.
I agree.
I started the first, uh, one in Plasky County in two thousand and six and it's been awesome.
We feel ours is awesome too.
Go down there and see four hundred kids there that can't sit still in a classroom. And they're doing something with their hands that they like to do, and then all of a sudden they get a welding job in Indiana making. In three months, they can make enough money to not work the rest of the year and just all that.
Well, this is year two and we have over three hundred and fifty students in our A T C.
Does, uh, does any other district feed to it?
Powell.
Powell.
Very few numbers though.
Very few.
Majority of our, of them are R P S.
That's another topic in itself.
Yeah, yeah.
I wonder if we could advertise in their newspaper, well, their newspaper's gone.
I'm going to read it, if I can. I wrote down the side of the page and around there which way. Oh, welcoming hospitality period, uh, academically over the past eight years. No, no, not that. Over the past eight years, the district has invested in the future of students with state-of-the-art facility upgrades. Along with a new A T C building or facility. I hate to use same words so much, you know, so I'm going to put building.
I'll pick that.
Or complex.
Okay. Now, as I said before, when you come back, the next time we come back and meet, you go have screening committee set it here and I'll bullet out some of this stuff. And I'll have Donna read it to them. This is our charge to you, these are the things you look for when you start this process. And, um, um, quite honestly, if you find somebody can do half of this, you'll have a good superintendent. Be honest with you, cause there's a lot there.
They have big shoes to fill.
I believe that. I believe that. I did it ten years and it's, uh, uh, we had eighty-five hundred kids. So you all know why I don't have any hair in it. But it was a blessing. I got to serve in the county where I was born and raised and where I'm going to die, so still live there. Um, we got the ad, that's, that's a biggie. Now, advertise, go to the timeline, that's the ones got the blanks. And, uh, I'm going to go down to the very bottom first and I'm going to put new superintendent named, I'm going to put May fifteenth, just as a. Kind of a goal, okay? It might not happen then, but that's what you guys said maybe four to six weeks, that'd be, six weeks. And when it says, where it says board to interview candidates, let's cut to be determined, T B D, because we can't nail that down. And now it'll go to the top and what is today, we can, we can get Mary Ann to get this out by the end of the week. So let's say advertising begins.
The sixth would be for all.
Let's put that. Let's put January sixth. And appi- appi- applications are going to close in thirty days, which.
February.
Basically would be.
February sixth.
February sixth, is that right? Let's see, yeah, let's see what day that's on.
Monday.
That'd be good.
It's a good day.
And I'll tell you, some of the stragglers, uh, this, Mary Ann is my secretary in Frankfurt, she's been there forty-five years. She is cantankerous. Some of these guys, they wait till the last.
Aggressively.
Day and they get into that application thing and they get, they don't know how to do it and they aggravate her to death. And so they procrastinate. Now, that's not the good ones. And I'll be honest with you, I'll be really surprised if we don't get some that, so your application is made up of five major things. You've got a cover letter to the board talking to you about how important they would deem it to be to be the next leader in Estill County Schools, yada, yada. They've got a resume that talks about all of their experiences. I have honestly, and then they've got an application that talks about their work history, along with eight educational open-ended questions that they fill out. Along with that, uh, criminal background thing. And, um, invariably, I will have, I've never had a lady do it, so pat yourselves on the back ladies. But I've had gentlemen that put the wrong name of the district on their cover letter. And boy, that turns off a committee.
Oh, yeah.
Did you, did you see that when you did it? Don't remember? I've seen, in other words, I'd be real surprised if I don't get something here covered, cause they cut and paste. They apply everywhere. They don't pick the place they think they fit. They apply everywhere, cause they're desperate for a job and they just cut and paste and then before you know it, I would love to be the superintendent in all county schools that comes to you. And the committee goes, that is gone, so, but it happens and that's when they don't pay attention to detail. And that wouldn't make you a good superintendent anyway, cause you've got to pay attention to detail. And so we're going to say applications are closed on that, I believe, Carrie, did you say it's a Monday?
Yes.
Yes.
February sixth. Now, if you remember, I just said a few minutes ago, the first thing we would do would be. One of you all will be on the screening committee, obviously, but the screening committee will come in that, the next date that we set, called our first joint meeting that is listed there. I noticed you all like to meet on Thursday nights. Apparently you set your meeting date for the third Thursday, I don't know. Is that a good night for everybody? Cause I want to set that date that's pleasing to you, cause you got to be here, but you won't be here long. I'll, I'll go to work with them after you leave, after they, we go through our preliminaries, I'll keep whichever one of you all and the other five and we'll go. Excuse me, we'll go to work right here. Uh, that'll be our first screening committee meeting, so.
The only problem is, is sometimes our board meetings are really long.
I would do it, is there any way you all could be here Tuesday?
I'm talking about a special call meeting.
Oh, okay.
But nothing but this.
Okay.
No, we don't want it, we don't want it on a board meeting.
I misunderstood.
And I didn't, I didn't clarify on that.
Special call.
I was just saying, would you like to meet on a Thursday, since you meet on Thursdays anyway?
Yeah, how about the seventh of February?
Well, you'll want to meet before the application closes with the screening committee, won't you? No, you will not for the first time? Okay.
Yep.
So February the seventh?
That's the night we do everything to get acclimated and, uh, the seventh is a little too quick because, here's why. Mary Ann has to process all of these applications. They're, they're, they close on February the sixth at midnight. She has to come in, get everything organized, they come to us in a link, the box link. We don't use, uh, we used to use thumb drives and, uh, we couldn't get them back and a lot of personal information out there. So it's a link now and I've got a, I'll have a password for the district and you all will get the password, screening committee get the password. And you can get into your link and you can look at all of, cause they're organized, real easy, little envelopes, got their name out there, you click on the envelope. And then here comes five more envelopes about work history, blah, blah, blah. So it's really easy to motivate, get around through it.
Would two weeks be sufficient time for her to process those those?
Let me see here, Sheila, I can remember your name, cause that's my wife's name.
But it's not spelled.
She doesn't spell it the same way I do.
I bet it's spelled differently.
Mine's a German Irish spelling of it.
Mine is actually spelled S H E L I, it's, it's wrong.
No, I, I've had, now this is gospel.
Mr. Eaton, you're on camera, don't say that.
You ain't going to play it back to Sheila, are you? My wife.
I've had people ask.
Oh, I thought you said your wife was, I'll never say that.
No, 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 no. My parents didn't know how to spell Sheila.
I've had people ask me if I knew how to spell my name, I'd tell them why my age is, I have, yes, I have.
Twenty-first too late?
Is twenty-first work?
Let me see here.
Does that give her sufficient time to?
Oh, she don't need that long, but.
Well, then how about the fourteenth, Valentine's Day?
I think.
Well, Brian might have to take Tracy out or Tracy's taking her.
Yeah, I'm going to have to.
Tracy might tell Brian and she's taking her out.
Unless Brian's on the committee, he won't be here but fifteen minutes.
Well, that's true.
And, uh, well, well, we meet here, just.
Yes, yes.
I don't know, I think a lot of people would have a problem on Valentine's Day. I don't think that's a good day.
Is the ninth soon enough or, I mean, too soon? If it closed on the sixth?
I believe she could pull it together with that. Honestly.
The thirteenth on a Monday.
It don't matter to me.
As long as she has sufficient time to do what she needs to do.
She fusses at me if she doesn't.
Then let's do the thirteen, that way she.
That way she'll be able to come.
I'm going to say, I'm going to tell her, I told you all, she fuss at me. She'd say, yes, I would.
Uncle's birthday.
Okay, now, that night, the screening committee goes to work after we have our little preliminary, like I said.
We'll have to.
They'll have, they'll have the next, the next meeting between this meeting and the next one's when they've got to read all their information. And we, that's all based on the number of applications we get, of course, just how much reading that will be. Then I try, I try to give them a couple of weeks, because they're all working, you know, they're all employees, they're volunteering. And you just can't make them, ask them to cram real quickly, so, um, I'm going to, I'm going to suggest that, uh, we give them a couple of weeks. If that, say the K S B A conference is the twenty-third, fourth and fifth. But we could have our screening committee meeting on twenty-seventh with the screening committee, cause you guys will probably be going to training. Uh, so it wouldn't be good to have anything on the twenty-third or fourth, cause you all going up to.
We'll be there till Sunday.
Louisville probably. And by the way, you'll get, just so you'll know, you get an hour and quarter credit for this process, so keep that in mind. At the end, I'm going to give you a certificate, you get, well, and if you get up there and you get bored at a meeting, you're thinking, I only need an hour and a quarter, I'm going to go home. Because Tim's going to give it to us for doing the search. So, um, they, they do that to all districts, so. Twenty-seventh?
So we'll have to ask for a special call board meeting on the thirteenth at six o'clock?
Whatever time you all want to have that meeting. And yes, it is a special call and it's just a twenty-four hour notice, of course. You know, so, uh, just like you do a regular, you all do special call meetings, I'm sure.
We do.
That's what it is.
I was just putting it on my schedule.
And at that, and at that meeting, the press or anybody can come, the first part of it, there's nothing. I will, I will go over how many applicants you got, I won't be calling any names. I'll talk about how many females applied, how many males applied, just some statistics, basic statistics, that's common knowledge for everybody, but no names. I don't mention anybody's name that's an applicant, so anybody can come, but then when I, we dismiss the board that night and stay to work. That's when I ask the press or tell them they have to leave, cause we go in closed session. Y'all have a press here?
We call the special call.
We do.
For thirteen.
Do they come?
February thirteenth.
Where we, um.
Who would, will we post that on?
Most of them stay at home and watch it.
So we'll post, call it.
I didn't know.
Yeah, we'll say it at our board meeting.
Right.
The nineteenth.
Mhm.
And that gives sufficient time, notification.
Yeah.
So everybody, are we down to the twenty-seventh on our timeline? So everybody, are we down to the twenty-seventh on our timeline?
Yep.
So the twenty-seventh will be another special call.
The second screening.
Now, would that have to be a special called board meeting or is that just a screening committee? The twenty-seventh is
It's, it's been ruled that the public has a right to know your meeting, although they can't come.
So it'd be a special.
So, yes.
So we would mark it a special call.
And I'll keep you posted on that. It'll be a special call meeting, because they're just like a site base, they're a committee of the board.
Gotcha.
By law. I'm not an attorney, but I've been told that.
You play one.
Now, we're gonna say six o'clock for that first one. And here's what I do with the committee, uh, folks. After that first one, you, you all have set the time at six. Now, I will tell the committee that night before they leave, are you all okay with meeting at six? Do you wanna meet at five? Do you wanna meet? Because a lot of them like to come straight from school sometimes, so they don't have to go home and turn around and come back. So I'll give them the option of setting their meeting times when the board's not involved, okay? Got it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, but thirteenth, we're gonna be at six o'clock. And then.
We can make it sooner if that works better for you.
Oh, it don't matter about me. I, I, I do whatever.
Okay.
I do whatever the district wants.
Okay.
All, all in the evenings work to me. You normally meet at six, don't you? Let's keep it on six and then they'll have two meetings without you after that. If they wanna meet a little earlier, then they can, but then when we come back to that last meeting where we present the candidates to you, we'll, we'll make it at six o'clock. And that's the date we need to come up with right now. Be sometime in, uh, March.
Is that the third screening?
Anything on your school calendar that's?
Are you talking about the joint meeting between the board and the screening committee?
Yeah, that last one there where they give, where
Their recommendations.
Do we set a date for the third screening or is that just an if needed?
That determined by the screening committee.
Yeah, let's go ahead and set a date for that, because, um, sometimes you need it, sometimes you don't. Let's go ahead and set a date, though. Let's make that March the, let's see. Y'all have anything like, when's your spring break, in April?
It's not till April. When are district tournaments?
Yeah, that's something else. They're usually
In March.
Because they'll start in March.
Yeah, start in March.
Possibly the end of February.
Yeah, they're usually
Because if you do district regions and then state.
They'll be playing tournament in February.
But those are more like thirty.
But that Monday, typically it's not on Monday.
It's usually in the last, latter part of the week.
Unless you get weather, but.
And these aren't set in stone.
Right.
They can be changed if there's something, you know, no big deal, it's just something to go by.
Well, I think if you stick with Mondays.
Yeah, it's consistent.
Then it's, it's pretty good as far as
Okay.
Well, and then suddenly Well, that's just a week after, yeah, that's just a week.
Thirteenth or the twentieth.
The thirteenth.
Thirteenth or twentieth.
Let's do, let's set the third screening committee meeting for Feb- March thirteenth, sorry. Think that would be good and that time will be determined, but if you wanna write six o'clock on it. So what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna clean this document up. I'm gonna send it back to Andrew and she can impart it back to you, plus your ad. Hopefully I can do that tomorrow. And, uh, then when you give me the thumbs up on the ad, I'll have Mary Ann to, to do it. And she doesn't work on Fridays, so I need to get it to her by Thursday. She'll be all right. Now, that last meeting, when we all come back together and we present our candidates to you and, and, uh, after they present their candidates, I'll let them report, then I'll dismiss them. After you all had dialogue, whatever they wanna say to you or you wanna say to them. Then I'll stay with you and we'll plan on how we go forward with interviews and things like that. And then I'll work with you till we hire the superintendent.
So our regular call board meeting will be on the sixteenth
Mm-hmm.
Of March.
You could, you could have somebody, but no, you, no, no, you can't. No, we just need to forget about that, because we gotta interview and do a lot of stuff. Was that what you was thinking about the regular meeting or?
It just said a joint meeting between the board and the screening.
Oh, no, no, we don't need to do that there. No, that's too, uh, too much stuff. We could do it, uh, we could, and it's a lot of meetings for you guys, I know, but you're gonna meet on the sixteenth, you wanna swing it till the twentieth or twenty-seventh?
Just the twenty-seventh.
Because I hate for you to have to be coming too frequent. I know y'all make a lot of money, but.
Oh, yeah. Sorry.
I had a guy come in my office one time and he was, he just spiraled in there, he didn't stop at the risk and he wanted to know what it paid to be a board member. At that time, it's forty-five dollars, meeting. He let off some kind of big oath, well, I'll just go run for magistrate. I said, I think that's what you ought to do. You oughta go run for magistrate, buddy. So, twenty-seventh, okay?
Yeah.
Like I said, we may get down the road and set the flyer up, we may need to change some of these, but I'll be keeping you well informed. Now, what other questions would you have for me that, uh, we haven't talked about and don't hold back? I wore you out. I was just praying today that the Lord would let me get through this without my nose running and my, and me coughing and carrying on. So he's blessed me, so, uh.
Who sets the candidate criteria, the board or the screening committee?
The candidate criteria will be those bullets in the
That are in the
First paragraph.
Okay.
And, uh, that's, I do those on a little chart sheet. And, uh, and I remind the committee continually, now look at your charge. Has this person got any administrative experience? Does this person know anything about buildings and grounds? Are they, have they shown academic leadership improvement? I remind them constantly of those things. Focus on the charge.
So like if you read that, administrative experience, instructional leader, effective communicator.
They'll be bullets, they'll just be bullets, effective communicator, somebody with, uh,
But that's where it's all coming from, is basically this first paragraph.
That is.
Are you all okay with everything in that first paragraph? Because I had to go back and read that now, that kinda put a different light on it.
That's where the charge comes from. If you want something different in there, we, we can go back and revisit.
Under that number eight, where it says release of information, that's just where you're talking about the committee should not, talk about it in public and any kind of information should come through the committee chair or
We'll talk extensively about confidentiality. I'll talk with you about it when they're all here. Then when you leave, I actually, you, excuse me, I actually have them sign form
Good.
Saying that they will be as confident, because it works better. I mean, if you, and this is a small town, I don't, everywhere you go, people talk. Those people out there right now probably knows who your superintendent's gonna be, they think already. I can tell you, it's out there, they'll
They've already told us.
Oh, okay. Not any different anywhere, Carrie.
No.
Same way.
Well, you've just made my brain start thinking here.
All right.
When you said these become our criteria.
Yep.
And then you mentioned earlier that you have people that have come out of retirement, people that have not had any administrative roles, people that are assistant superintendents. So does that, does that matter to you all as a board? Do you want it to be somebody that's currently employed in the district? Somebody that's retired and has been gone for years and wants to come back? Do you set those kinds of things in this? No. Okay.
That's for them to decide.
Because that would be like say, okay, A, B and C, they're new, blah, blah, blah. D and E are retirees and we decide if we wanna keep D
That's right.
In the A, B and C.
When you get down
We don't want D and E.
Okay, because like I'm thinking of when we hire teachers, I'm thinking of, we say these criteria. I want you to have been, I don't know, have three years in the classroom or
We don't get that specific.
Okay.
That stuff, they find out.
Okay. So it doesn't matter if they don't, if we vet those applicants and they decide they don't want it, it's okay.
Yep.
Okay, perfect, because I didn't want it to send you somebody and
Yeah, discrimination against someone.
They just graduated with their
Yes.
Superintendent certificate and they're coming in and they will be, uh, I would say.
Yeah, you'll see an array of situations, I'm pretty sure. You'll see, you'll see some, uh, you might get an experienced superintendent or two. I hope you do, you know, that's somebody you can consider. You may get a, you may get a young gentleman or lady that's knocked you down the park in a big district as a assistant or academic person or whatever. You may, you may drop some of those, that's, those people are looking for places to, uh, get their foot in the door and work. And, uh, but you'll be very fortunate if you can finally about stay eight years again. It's just not happening. And I, I hope I'm wrong about that. I really hope I'm wrong and you can say in eight years, of course, you'll have to come to the cemetery probably to tell me, but I'm old. But, you know, uh, you're just not seeing it, we're just not seeing that right now. I don't know if it's COVID, I don't know if they're burnt out, I don't know what it is, but we're not seeing the number of applicants that we used to.
I think it's a combination of several things.
Yeah, I think it's a combo. But, uh, anyway. Anything else? Well, you all have been fun to work with, you know, you gotta have a little fun and I appreciate it. And I take this work very serious. We'll do, uh, we'll be, we'll do the best job we know how. And, uh, uh, your committee, I'll lead the committee through the process. We'll do it all, we'll dot every I and cross every T and keep you out of legal trouble.
I will put this on KDE's website. Well, I will send them that we want it posted and then they approve when it gets posted and they'll put it up.
And, uh,
So I'll do that tomorrow.
You can use some of that wording up there if you need to put it in that little
Perfect.
area.
Perfect.
Yep, that works that way. One time, the district forgot, I told them to, but they forgot to do that and they made us advertise longer. We had to stretch it out a few more weeks because KDE didn't know about it. So I'm thinking, well, they need to know for, but anyway.
So just put this at the bottom where it's got that two hundred and thirty-five characters, is that what you're saying? Where I can type that in when we do, when I do the application?
Whatever you wanna take down there and put on there. And, uh, of course, the bottom of the ad, it goes without saying, I guess, that application deadline. I'll, I'll put that in the red down there now that we've determined that, which we did. And we'll, uh, we'll get it, get it out and about. And you wanna see it, just go to KSBA's website and there'll be, search engine just take you, it'll take you to services, superintendent search and you'll be on there by Friday, maybe by Thursday.
Do we have any further discussion this evening? Any questions, anything further?
And there's no action, you need, you need to take on any of this. This is all planning, meeting stuff and, uh, appreciate it again, you all giving me the opportunity to come and work with you. And, uh, it's a nice little drive over here, not, not bad at all. Sometimes I wind up in Hackville, sometimes I wind up in Trigg County. That's, uh, and I've got a new guy out there now, thank the Lord, but, uh, uh, I need a helicopter every now and then.
Mr. Eaton, we certainly appreciate your time and coming to help us and then to guide us through this process.
You're paying me? But I will tell you this. The last time I came here, the superintendent's search fee was eighty-five hundred dollars. I got that dropped to six thousand, I did it. I told them, I said, we had some competition that was coming in and underbidding us by a little bit. And I said, if you wanna keep this service that KSBA's had for so many years, you're gonna have to come down, because boards don't have all that extra money anymore. So it's twenty-five hundred dollars cheaper than it was eight years ago.
Thank you. We appreciate you, we appreciate your time and you have safe travel home. Um, with no further business, I would like to call for an adjournment. At this time, do I have a motion to adjourn? Sheila Samples makes a motion. Carrie Smallwood makes a second, all in favor?
Nikki says good evening.
It's seven fifty-one, the
Yeah, Kentucky plays in nine minutes and I dread it. LSU will probably beat them right at Lexington.
Yeah, I know.
Right now, I feel like they deserve it.
I know.
I'm so tired of Cal.
I am so, I am with you, Mr. Eaton.
He has, and give somebody a lifetime contract.
Why do you do that? Why do you do that?
Nobody thinks sense, would. That, that just tells a guy that